Good afternoon and welcome to the February 11th, 2025 Board of Alderman Bond Referendum Workshop. If you would, please bow your head for a quick order prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity today to gather together to do your work in the city. We ask you to lead, guide, and direct our actions tonight. Ask these things in your name and pray. Amen. If you're able to stand, please do so as we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Alderman. So this is a follow-up discussion from November 11th when we started talking about a potential bond referendum. So staff has been working over the last few months to come up honing in on the projects we previously discussed and come up with some pricing for that. So we're going to give you a refresher of the overall process and then staff will make their presentations and then the Finance Director will follow up with some of the finance-related on this. So you should also have a hard copy of the PowerPoint presentation in front of you. But just an overall of this, we've got several different projects and they're categorized under Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, and Public Works. Just an overview, a general obligation for a GO bond referendum, this is the most responsible and efficient way to fund capital projects and local governments receive the lowest possible interest rate for financing. The GO bond is secured by the city's creditworthiness and add the lower taxes on its residents. It can only be used for the approved purpose, so regular operating costs such as salaries and benefits and things like that do not apply. A GO bond ballot question must state the purpose for the bonds and the maximum principal amount of the bonds and the cost to the taxpayer. The ballot amounts need to consider inflationary costs as the issuance may be over several years. The ballot question can refer to a broad category of projects or within a specific purpose or stated as a specific project. The ballot questions cannot combine authorizations for multiple purposes. And then, of course, the best thing about this is the voters, citizens who are registered to vote have the opportunity to vote for or against each of the questions. So here you're going to see an example of what a question would look like on the ballot if the board chooses to go through a bond referendum. There could be up to four questions relating to Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, Streets Projects, and Stormwater Projects. So as a refresher on the calendar for this, today we're doing a referendum follow-up in the Gulf of this meeting afterwards as to receive direction on how you would like to proceed. If we do proceed, by May 1st, we would finalize the referendum amounts and questions, the community outreach, engagement to educate the public, that would start. At the May 13th meeting, the board would adopt the preliminary findings resolution to get the ball started. By May 17th, the publication of a notice of intent to file the application with the LGC would be submitted and by June 6th, we would file that application to the LGC. At the June 10th regular board meeting, we'd introduce the bond order, file the sworn statement of debt and statement of disclosures with the city clerk. At the July 8th regular meeting, the board would conduct a public hearing to adopt the bond orders and a resolution calling for the bond referendum. By July 11th, we would deliver the certified resolution call for the referendum to the Board of Elections and we would also by July 12th publish the final bond order and first notice of the referendum. July 19th, we would publish the second notice for the referendum. On September 5th, absentee ballots would be available. And September 12th, the last day to apply for registration for voting of the referendum. And October 7th, that's when the referendum would take place as part of our voting. On October 17th, the canvassing of the returns would be conducted. On November 12th at our regular meeting, there would be a declaration of results of the referendum. On November 15th, the publication of a statement of results would be posted and the initial go-bond authorization would expire within seven years. So we would also have up to a three-year extension if we requested that to do the bonds. So at this time, I'm going to ask Carrie Warren to come up and talk about her Parks and Recreation projects.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing okay.
Good evening.
All right, so we're going to talk about some fun stuff to start with. As I presented previously, the projects that Parks and Recreation are proposing for this bond referendum would be Aquatic Center Expansion, Martin Marietta Park Phase Implementation, and then Seth West Parrot Park Redevelopment. Starting off with the Aquatic Center Expansion, the specifics for the project would be the addition of a 300-foot, foot, feet lazy river as well as a variety of play features, water play features, and then additional parking to accommodate the addition of the capacity for that facility. Over to the side, you can see an example of what that may look like. We have, oh, does it do a pointer or not?
It does.
This one.
Wait for the screen. Could you screen?
Okay. So that would be your lazy river and then the water play features would be zero to one-foot depth entry, whatever we chose for that to be. And we could have a slide, different play features with water buckets, rain drops, kind of like what we currently have at the Aquatic Center, but it would just be more detailed and a variety and more features than what we have. And if we proceeded with that project, estimated cost is $2 million. And so this would be what the layout would look at, look like. This is currently our facility over at the Aquatic Center. The lazy river would be here. That's not an exact depiction, but of what we anticipate the location being. And then the square area would be the water features, possible slide things such as that. And then the additional parking would come down and around the south side of the facility. All right, why do we want to do this expansion and what's the justification? The facility for the past six to seven years is often at capacity during the operating season. People have to wait to get in, so we have to wait for people to leave before we can let others in. And we've seen that numerous days throughout the summers. It's proven to be a revenue generator. It's frequently used by non-city groups coming from other cities and counties such as Greenville, Emerald Isle, Corterick County, Onslow County. It's desired by the community and it's a family-friendly amenity that is in our system. As you can see below, when we did public input for our comprehensive master plan, we had the top five most desired new recreation amenities that were chosen by people who participated in public input. Number two was addition of a new splash pad slash playground area, which this falls within that category. And you can see other amenities on there as well that the community would like to see as far as outdoor performance areas and trails, which I'll talk about more. All right, Martin Marietta Park Plan Implementation. So this would continue implementation of the master plan that we previously developed for Martin Marietta. Project specifics for this particular bond referendum would be paving roads, paving parking lots, the construction of an amphitheater, addition of ropes course, zip line, a bike pump course, and then a boathouse slash meeting space for out at Martin Marietta by the large lake. Below, I have some examples of what a high adventure ropes course could look like and then a bike pump course. These are just examples of what some of these amenities look like. And then if you look at the graph I have here, this is a question that we asked when we were gathering input for the master plan of Martin Marietta. And it says, "What if any, what if any sources of funding are you willing to support in order to develop the proposed Martin Marietta Park?" And so 40% of people in the blue and the green chose taxes or a project-specific bond referendum, just for y'all's knowledge there on that. Project total for this project would be approximately $3 million. And the final project we're proposing is Seth West Parrot Park Redevelopment. Project specifics for this would be ball field renovation project, new pickleball courts and the addition of pickleball courts slash tennis courts, new basketball court, paved parking lots, and then the addition of a skate park. Once again, we have information which ties it back to our comprehensive master plan here where these were comments made by residents and people who participated in public input. I've highlighted the ones that are kind of specific to this project as well as the other projects we're proposing, but these items would be facilities in the park system are essentially loved, reinvest investing in the existing parks and increasing maintenance is important. The addition of a skate pad or skate park was strongly requested and converting older and underutilized courts into pickleball courts was noted. Total project cost for Seth West Parrot Park Redevelopment would be $3 million. So this is currently what Seth West Parrot Park looks like. We have a total of four baseball fields, as you can see they're spread out. We have two smaller ones, two larger ones. We have our pickleball and tennis courts here with the basketball courts right beside it. And then we have a few parking areas, non-paved and paved. And then, of course, the West New Bern Recreation Facility and the Kidsville Playground with What we are proposing would look like this. It would be a complete redevelopment of the configuration for baseball fields and it would be taking it to a wagon wheel style configuration with the ball fields in a circular figure with concession slash bathrooms in the middle to accommodate all fields. In addition to that, we would have existing parking, which is already there. We've got new pickleball courts proposed that would be in addition to what we currently have as well as the tennis courts. We currently have six pickleball courts, I believe, and two tennis courts, and we would be looking at nine pickleball and two tennis. Number four would be the addition of a walk-in trail, which we currently do not have at Seth West Parrot Park, so that would be new. And then right here, number seven, you see the basketball court would be reconfigured to be switched around a little bit. And then this proposed skate park over here, number eight, to the side, that would be a long pine tree. So those are all the elements we're proposing in the new project for the redevelopment Seth West Parrot Park.
Any questions?
So justification for Seth West Parrot Park. It was essentially built in 1976. All current ball field facilities, restrooms, and access do not meet any ADA standards. The lighting infrastructure is almost 50 years old, it's outdated, and all overhead lines need to be moved underground. The following organizations currently use this facility: Gaver Seafield Middle School, New Bern Sunday School League, Faber Baseball and East Carolina Adult Baseball League. Skate park is highly-desired amenity by the community as we have documented in our comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And then pickleball courts see a high amount of usage. We currently only have six courts and the current infrastructure for those is failing. So a total of all three of our projects would Aquatic Center Expansion, Martin Marietta Park Phase Implementation, and the Seth West Parrot Park Redevelopment. We're looking at a total of $8 million.
Yes, I do, Ms. Warren. If you go back to your chart, there's no pages, where it says Phase Implementation.
For Martin Marietta?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
With the charts, okay. I know you mentioned that 40% was taxes and projects specified by the bond referendum, but by looking at this chart, I see we have other wants by the citizens that's supporting grants and partnerships and fees in lieu of, and local gift donations. And that is one of, from the beginning, when we start talking about the different phases of Martin Marietta Park, you know, I mentioned that I felt like I want this park to come to fruition for all the different phases of it, but I just, me personally, I feel that this part is, development of this park should be done through, as you've got here on your charts, the different sources of income here, revenue, to support this park. I just don't see having to spend, you know, $8 million of taxpayers' money to develop this park. And this is my feelings. You did an excellent job on getting the information provided for us and I appreciate that, but that's just the way I feel about it because I think we can go another route here to get these phases of this park implemented.
So Martin Marietta Park Phase would only be $3 million for that one, so that's why we've gone separated out into different projects. We do intend to continue applying for grant funds for the development of Martin Marietta as we have for all our different facilities because, let's be honest, we can't develop without getting grant funds for all of our facilities. So we will definitely be continuing as we're always looking to do grants.
Thank you. There was one other question I had for you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. No else?
Foster, this is probably more appropriate question for you. Just looking at the various recreation projects, what would you say would be sort of the average useful life of all of these improvements? And I know it's a tough question because it's going to vary based on the specific improvement being made, but just a ballpark.
Absolutely. And I think when we talk about life of improvement, let's talk about Seth West Parrot Park. Carrie was accurate, that park was built in the early to mid-'70s. And when you look at the facility, you've got three restrooms now that are not handicap accessible that are spread out. We know that there's an issue with those restrooms with the concession area as well, constant issues that we have with the maintenance and upkeep. And sooner or later, we're going to have to do some work on all of those. When it comes to ball field lights, four sets of ball field lights, the average price now for light on a ball field with LED technology is about $200,000 per. The lights that we currently have in place, they're metal halide, so that technology is no longer being sold. The majority of those poles are wooden, so we've already had to replace several of those poles because they've rotted out over the years. With a wooden pole, they have a certain amount of life, and 50 years certainly just about exceeds that. When we talk about the tennis courts that we converted about five years ago to now pickleball, those tennis courts were put in in the 1980s as tennis. It was gravel with pavement. And so just think about the road surface as well, that stuff wears out over time. And we're getting constant complaints right now about the surfacing of the pickleball courts, even though we have taken the materials to do an extra surface coat on those, the cracks will always be there until we do something. So unfortunately, this is something with Parks and Recreation Facilities where you've got to freshen those amenities up from time to time. 50 years actually pretty good. When it comes to the aquatic facility, the current, the shell of the facility, everything was built around 2010, so the current amenities are in really good shape. So looking at the things that will be added, you could probably expect about a 30-year life on those. In terms of what we're talking about with Martin Marietta Park, well, the main things we've done out there are trails, which are very low maintenance. We've put two shelters in, we've put restrooms in, which probably have 75-year lifespans on those based on how we built those. Now, none of the roadways have been paved and they need to be upgraded just like the parking does. And of course, those things will last probably 15 to 20 years without having to pave it again based on the use for that. When it comes to things like a zip line and adventure ropes course, those uses are probably going to get around 15 years each. And let's see here, we've got some docks out there. We normally see about 20 years out of docks, but with all amenities, even like with Stanley White Recreation Center, there is a finite life on those types of things.
Yeah, and again, and that's understandable. It's the same issue, same question, you know, that dealing with road improvements, facilities like a new fire station. I guess just the point being that wherever the final decisions are made with a bond ordinance, voters will tell us what they're willing to support, what they're not willing to support. And by that meaning, they're saying, yes, you know, we're willing to see an increase in taxes to pay for specific improvements. It's important to keep in mind that useful life because it's not something that you're going to revisit two or three years down the road. You're looking at a 20 to 30 to 40-year time span that today's improvements will be here for a long time before a future board's got to wrestle with what they're going to do at that point. So it's just part of the consideration that we need to kind of keep in mind with all of this.
Any other questions?
Foster, I think it's maybe Kim. When you speak of, because I had this question asked to me, when you speak of the seven-year and we can apply for an additional three-year, can you break that down so that citizens can know what you're speaking of?
Sure. I actually, so it expires seven years after, it would be seven years after October 7th. So October 7th, 2032 is when the bond would expire. However, we just submit a request to the LGC for an extension. They approve the extension, which our consultants said they've never, not seen them approve it, and they approve the extension for an additional three years. So you have additional three years to utilize those funds.
So if the board approves this and we take this out to the citizens and this is approved, it doesn't necessarily mean that all of these projects would go out for bond right after that in 2026. It could be that maybe a few years for each one of those.
Right, I'm sorry.
Not everything would be done at the same time. It could, but there's no guarantee that would happen. So we've got that up to 10-year period to do all these projects.
Okay. Great. Thanks for explaining that. But now with payback of this long, this bond, it's a 20-year debt.
Correct.
Okay. So that's going to affect our taxpayer citizens.
They vote on that, yes.
I know they vote on that, but I'm just saying, I'm wanting the taxpayers to know what they're getting into.
And that's going to come up in just a few minutes in detail.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions on Parks and Recreation? All right, just I'd like to ask Chief Locklear to come up on the public safety aspect.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Seeing how that works. So let me start off by saying that I appreciate having the opportunity to come before you and present on this particular project for the department. Prior to my arrival, I took the time to review both the strategic plan and the standard cover, just so I'd have a better understanding. And then having that opportunity over the course of a year to see that in real time and how that really plays out has been very beneficial too. So knowing that the plan goes back to 2017 as far as the strategic plan and standard cover back to 2019, I'm sure those that have been on the board have been presented at different times for consideration for a station. So I appreciate that. What you have here is just taking a look at what you've seen before, which is the three districts. And I'll focus in on this district here, being District 3, and that one specifically being current Elizabeth Station. The proposed location for the station, I want to kind of point out if I can, two different locations, one being here, and then I'll talk about here. So District 3 right now is twice the size of the other districts, being at 14.3 square miles, so that's quite a bit of area as far as coverage. And going back and looking at the call volume, and I'll take it back to 2017, Elizabeth Station has been increasing each year. So 2017, you had 635 calls, 2021, 842, and then in 2024, that's increased to 1,015. So we see, you know, the percentages there over the course of that period of time. So the proposed station in itself, when I talk about, again, nothing saying that this is it, but I just wanted to give you an example. South is 70 and then north is 70. Our staff has been able to work along with GIS and look at some of the travel time. So it was looking at how could we improve our services to the community in the area served and focusing from the Lake Tyler area down to the Craverne area, which definitely increases or reduces the response time to better provide service. One of the other things that I would like to point out about specifically somewhere here just south of or north of, that would be around the north location would be near the DMV section and then the other one would be where the connection has basically come to a stop. And the reason why those areas were looked at specifically was because of intersections or accessibility to an intersection, which would give you equal representation as far as response in either direction, north or south. This particular slide is really trying to focus in to give you a visual, and this is not to say this is where the station would have to go or even, but it's just pointing out a proposed location here. And all the calls that you see in and around this area is specific to just Elizabeth currently for this past year of 2015 that we just mentioned. So quite a bit of calls for the area and you see the increase. The purpose of this station would be not just to absorb some of Elizabeth's area of coverage, but it also benefits the city as a whole. An example that I would give you there for a multi-company response is if you had a structural fire toward the downtown area, then this station or this response could be potentially closer than the additional unit that would be coming from Thurman to support your total response force. So that's another consideration. Another thing to consider is the calls that we see here do sometimes overlap with additional calls. So you could have two calls going on at one time. So basically, if you had a call that was going on in Elizabeth, even though we look at the station being specific to this one district, it would be providing the service into Elizabeth District if it's the closure unit response, if that makes sense. So again, this just kind of gives you a visual of a proposed location, and this one was focused in on the south side versus if we were talking about something that was a above Seventy on the north side. So some of the specifics, some of the original plans that I saw when I first got here was a station that encompassed more than just the fire department, and it was over twenty-thousand square feet. What I wanted to do was reach out to some of our neighboring municipal departments, and some that have built stations in recent, taking into consideration the three-way concept, which allows for growth. Not saying that that's multi-company, that's needed right now. My recommendation would be a single company for a new station. But this is a reduction as far as square footage, down to thirteen thousand, which this example being, again, a neighboring department. This would accommodate up to two companies, if you look at growth over time. And then also, when we talk about the cost associated, it would have been eight million dollars. This particular station, or the example you see, was roughly five hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot is what it was going for. And then I also wanted to at least include, because it has been brought up in the past about the consideration for a E.S.C. So looking at previous plans, if that was the case, and you wanted to consider that with this particular plan, you're looking at approximately two thousand additional square feet that would be needed. Any questions?
Really? I'm shocked. That might be a first.
Chief, real quick question, and I'm sorry, maybe you did already mention this. Given the geographic five of District Three, if or when a new fire station were to be built in the proposed area, does that create sort of a new district, District Four, that will take some area out of three to make it a little more compact?
Yeah, great question. What would we be looking at at that time? Obviously, you'd want a primary response district, so that primary unit. But we also take into consideration closest unit response. So this potentially would be District Four, yes, but then, from an operational standpoint, we'll be dealing with communications, and as far as our dispatch determinants, based on engine company and closest ladder company. So you would have a defined district, and that's always good to have in the event that CAG goes down. Because if you don't have the technology available to you for that closest unit response, then you go back to what we first started with, which is to run calls in the district lines. But yes, to answer the question, you would want to define what would be considered that particular district as the primary response.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, I got a question for you. The Elizabeth Avenue Fire Station now, currently, how many miles does it travel to its father's point? Do you know?
I don't know how many miles to its furthest point, but going back to here, still getting used to the pointer. But when we talk about what it's responding to, the Lake Tyler, and then also here, the Craverne, both of which are normally out of the recommended response time. So we're in much higher response times for those particular areas.
And what is the recommended response time?
We want to shoot for the five-minute response time for your primary response.
And it's even greater distance for the Headquarters Fire Station. If it had to respond out to some of the father's areas in yellow there, I mean, you're doubling the distance for a second dude as well, correct?
That's correct.
And how many people do you currently have stationed at Elizabeth Avenue?
Elizabeth Avenue Station maintains a minimum of four.
Always four? Okay.
Signs five, but always four.
Any other questions?
One second, Chief. Did you mention that there were two proposed locations?
Yes, these are just examples, and I'll point them out again. Here, we were trying to look at all the travel times. Make sure it's hard to see here. When we're talking about on the south side, we're trying to look at the response times there, and then just so you have a visual on the north side, just next to where DMV is. And the reason why we were using those as examples specifically is because it has an intersection that you could come out onto Seventy and have a response in either direction. If the location would put you away from an intersection, just, you know, consideration of, we have to go a mile in one direction to turn around and come back and respond, it's taken away from your response time. So we were specifically looking at locations on Forty-Three that had access to intersection.
If we look at the Forty-Three connector, the section that hasn't been built yet, do we have confirmation that we will have access directly to the highway with a crossover, possibly traffic lights, or are we going to have to utilize a service lane to make a U-turn and that kind of stuff?
To my knowledge, one of the locations being on the south side would have access at the intersection, based on current DOT. But I could go back and just verify, just to make sure.
When you say the south side, what are, which area are you speaking of?
So what I'm using as the example, like, if you come, the DMV, it would be the north side is what I'm referring to.
Okay.
And then on the opposite side of Seventy would be what I'm referring to is the south side.
The south side.
Yeah, just both being on Forty-Three, just two different locations for us to be able to base response time on.
Which is already there, those?
Correct.
Okay.
Is property available there? Is there property available there?
I can't answer that fully, because I know that there was conversations with the property owner, I think being Warehouser, at one time. I'm not for sure if it's available currently today.
Probably is available.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea when Forty-Three works going to start?
Deanna can probably answer that.
It's supposed to be led in May of this year.
Being led in May of this year, no, so eighteen-month completion, I believe, year and a half?
We haven't verified the construction schedule. I would anticipate that it will be awarded probably in May of...
Oh.
They're letting May of 2025, and I would anticipate the contract being awarded by the Board of Transportation probably January, February of 2026. And at that point, DOT's contractor would give us an actual construction schedule. Currently, DOT is telling us it's a three-year schedule, but I don't think it's going to take that long.
Chief, of the two locations that you've pointed out, well, actually, three, one on the north side of Seventy, one on the south side of Seventy, and then you are aware of the one that, when they extend Forty-Three, we were looking at there, correct?
I don't have the full details on the third one that you mentioned.
Okay. Well, there's a little section of Forty-Three that's not complete, and there's been some discussion that we purchase property or get property there as well. I mean, you can only assume it's going to be probably halfway between where the two points are now. And I was just wondering, at some point in time, we don't have to do it today, but at some point in time, you need to look at that piece of property as well, and see of the three spots, which would be your better, which would be the better location, which would serve citizens better.
We can go back and work with G.I.S. on that.
Because at some point in time, we're going to have to buy some property, and we just need to know which one to buy. Hard to look at.
I thought it was mentioned before previously, that we mentioned it before, that it was a piece from Warehouser that we were looking at.
It was.
So, I mean, nothing's changed with that.
It has. Haven't?
The donation piece has changed.
Yeah.
Regardless, we're going to, we'll have to purchase property.
Okay. So, when did that change? I wasn't aware of that.
We brought that up when we were having issues with the transformer shortage, and we had to update our customer service policy to charge developers based on how that formula worked, and so we had to pass cost on to the developers for the electrical infrastructure. And so that's when that discussion came.
Called payback?
Yes.
Okay. It was discussed, but I don't remember mentioning anything about the fire department, the new, for this piece of property for fire department. Okay. Well, all I can say is, Chief Locklear, you're telling us that, you know, there's a gap in response time, and we, you know, we're all aware that that area is growing leaps and bounds, and we definitely need a fire, a fire station on the west end. You know, I'm all for a fire station, because when it comes to better, providing better service to our citizens, you know, we're looking at people's lives and their homes. So I think we need to do what we have to do for in reference to this fire department. Thank you for the information.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome. Thank you.
You know, I'll say this, and I'm going to follow Rick's lead from a few meetings ago. I mean, the fire station, we've got to have it. Yeah, it's got to happen, and we just need to bite the bullet and do it. I would be scared that if we put it on the referendum that, and it was voted out, and then we build it anyway, that would make us look terrible. So we've got to build a fire station.
So we're going to talk about some of those options in just a few minutes as well.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much, Chief.
All right, this time I'd like to ask George Childs to come up on the Public Works Projects.
Good evening, Mayor, Board.
Evening.
So the public works projects that we're recommending for inclusion on consideration are eleven stormwater projects, and then street projects, which will consist of our road resurfacing and repairs. We've identified eleven separate projects, and in doing this, our Stormwater Superintendent, Avery Smith, and our Assistant Public Works Director worked with me to pick projects that we had a good assessment on, we had good data on, and could be, there are not very many unknowns. So when we select these, you may recognize some of these have been brought up before as having drainage deficiencies in the area. So the first one is Pollock and Liberty Street. This is in front of the Habitat Resale Center. We've had, on several occasions, the roadway inundated with water. We had this included as a site-specific area in the asset inventory assessment. So we have cameraed those lines, we have real data on it. And what we're proposing is to upsize some of the downstream pipes, and to fix some grading along that street where you have a dip in the road to accommodate that, to take the water to the ultimate outfall of that drainage system. Second project, very similar in how it's identified, we had historic knowledge of some localized flooding in the area, and this was due to undersized pipes that are existing in some blockages. We've had those lines cameraed during the AIA, and we have data on that. And we're proposing to do some upgrades to the pipes and upsizing, and replacement of some granite curbing along that section to change the grade. Next project is the Green Park Terrace. This is a culvert deterioration, and you'll see several of these in here that have existing, CMP stands for corrugated metal pipe. DOT had long specified this, and many municipalities have used it. A while ago, we all decided that it was not the best material as it deteriorated with this entity and our soil types and the water conditions, and this is one of those culverts. We also have an existing water line that is not helping with the flow through this area. It's just be a replacement of that pipe head wall and relocation of the existing water Christopher Avenue Culvert, very similar. We've got a corrugated metal pipe, and we've got a restriction with existing water main running through that structure. We have cameraed it, and we're proposing to replace it with an upsized arch culvert head walls and relocation of the water main. Now, Tavarna Cart Path, this is a culmination of some planned infrastructure improvement by E.C. DOT. We've had on several occasions the section of Old Airport Road coming into Tavarna, flood and the water crosses the road. We had, this is a section of DOT Road where the culvert is on Old Airport. So they did a hydrology study on that pipe and determined that the current pipe is undersized, and they're going to be upgrading that pipe on Old Airport to a forty-two-inch culvert, which will necessitate the next downstream culvert, which is actually on the golf course. But it has lots of our community within Tavarna draining through it, and if we do not upsize that existing golf course cart path culvert to accommodate the new DOT culvert, then we're going to have additional blockage, and we really hadn't resolved the issue. Where we, to do this, we would recommend and require an easement for the city to do this work, and have that easement in standing for continued maintenance on this section. Brunswick Avenue Culvert Replacement. Brunswick Avenue, this is where it goes into Fox Chase Village right beside O'Reilly's. This drainage way that accepts water into this culvert runs down behind the businesses on Glen Burnie up to the Roanoke intersection, and when this backs up, we've had trouble with it on Glen Burnie actually covering the road. We've had DOT work on their sections. But we have identified that this section of pipe needs to be upgraded and enlarged to a twenty-four-inch RCP, and some additional drop inlets placed. The Hazel Avenue Culvert, there again, it's got a corrugated metal pipe and head walls, and we've got an existing water line to support through that section. And we would be replacing those with new head walls and a different style arch culvert or concrete box.
Excuse me, George.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that located, is that right there by the canal?
Yes, ma'am. It's right at canal. It's that one right there where they had elevated the houses.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes. Next project's Oaks Road Drainage Improvements. There's large sections of Oaks Road, and this is one of those sections that has no roadside drainage. We end up with water standing in the intersections of adjacent roads that tie in, and the standing water is a hazard to travel, and it deteriorates our roadway. What we're proposing here is to do some swale grading on the road sides, and install drop inlets and cross pipes at the intersections, and also enhance any driveways up to the edge of the right-of-way line, so we're not having standing water from the right-of-way forward to the edge of pavement.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
This area, is that the area where, because it's drawing, I'm not really pinpointing the area here on this drawing. Is that the area where both sides of the road is really low, and there's two signs on each side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, it's a one section, and we are just finishing another project that was done at Poplar, where we had similar situation with road water collecting right at the intersection of Poplar and Oaks Road. So as we do this and work our way down, we're dealing with very, very flat grades, so it's difficult to accommodate the drainage. But as we do this, we're going to try to do it with the plan of leaving enough right-of-way when we do these drainage enhancements for either an expanded shoulder or a sidewall going down Oaks Road.
So that area would be built up right there, because this right, that street is level right with, it seems like the river there.
The problem with elevating the road is now we're standing the water on people's private property. So there's a balance to it, but that's what we're going to work through in part of this project going down Oaks Road. We're proposing also culvert at the head of Oaks Road at the intersection of Glen Burnie Road. This is to accommodate water that is currently standing in the intersection, and as you proceed back up Oaks Road, I think we've actually had one of the property owners, Mr. Sawyer, in here, about water standing on his property. This will, by installing this pipe, it'll allow for it to go to an existing outfall downstream and take some of the pressure off of that intersection of existing drainage. College Park Drainage Improvements. We've identified several areas within College Park that are in need of either pipe relocation or pipe enlargement. or pipe enlargement. We've also identified a section of existing pipe where the catch basins are not set to grade, so they're going uphill in several sections that would need to be reset. And that would encompass regrading ditches, removing or resizing existing culverts and we'll replace them. The Red Robin Culvert, I'm sure many of you've seen this, this is behind the old food line section right up against Red Robin. And this will be a replacement. We've got an existing 36-inch reinforced concrete pipe. We'd be replacing it with actually a larger one or two. So when we see this as replace that one, we'd also upsize in some fashion, whether we, depending on the cover that we're able to achieve on that road. And to total from the estimates that we've worked up with our consultants and the data that we have on these sites, the construction cost would be approximately $6 million. Next section is our streets projects and this is following in line with our pavement condition rating that was just recently completed in 2024. And it would constitute resurfacing for a majority of the money and then some medium priority items that would need to be done and then crack seal and some small patching on the other. But this would touch many of the roads within the city and is, was shown and identified in the study as necessary immediate items. And I know on, I didn't want to bring these two up, so during the November 11th, we talked about two pedestrian projects that had been mentioned. So one was Trent Boulevard and one was X-Road. The estimates that we have on these two were from NCDOT, very high-level software to, that takes a cost per mile based on prior projects within the state to give us a cost. So these are not site-specific. Right now, I would not feel comfortable with these estimates or using this vehicle to fund these two projects. While they're both good projects and we're working towards getting to this point of installing something on that road, the projects are so complex that I wouldn't be comfortable with these estimates utilizing NCDOT software. And any of you have any questions?
You decided not to put anything to help the problem on New Chantel or have you guys got it figured out in-house?
Some of this, now the bottom end of New Chantel will be assisted by the one at Old Airport. So we're going to relieve that pressure. We were trying to do ones that we knew would have an immediate impact, that we had a data on. That does not mean we don't have places that have had drainage deficiencies throughout the city that were not included on this list. Yes, there will be a multitude of other places. These were ones that we have ready data. We've already had consultants look at from prior work, either from FEMA or drainage study or AIA work that we could quickly advance to a point of contracting should the bond be approved for these items.
I have a question. Going back to Red Robin Lane.
Yes, ma'am.
You stated that you were going to replace. My question is, is that connected to already the Red Robin Lane project or that's another location?
That's another location, but the advantage of doing the work that we did and the money that you supplied from, for your work drainage down at the intersection of Trent and Red Robin, when we did that work, we were able to lower one of the driveway culverts, which is a rather large culvert, and enlarge it. That pipe was set one foot in reverse grade, so now we gained actually another foot of grade to drain the water so we can assist the water going out faster. So now we have a better, a better location to discharge the water. And this would assist with that, the area upstream now that we've resolved one of the downstream issues. And in addition to that, the drainage ditches and swales that take this water before it gets to that pipe were all part of the FEMA CAT A work and CAT D that went through those back drainage areas to remove any rear sediment in them. So we've got a better avenue to send the water and now we're working our way upstream to get to the upstream. So you've got to work from downstream upstream. And so this would be the next one on that road.
Okay, now where exactly is this located?
This is right at the rear, do you know where the loading docks are on the old food line that was, right across from the North Carolina Food Bank? Right there.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Would this help in any way with the issues on Trent Road with flights?
No, ma'am. That's too far, too far and a different discharge point in this area.
I just remember you saying a lot of it was connected.
Fortunately, both have large amounts of water, but these two are not connected to each other.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
George, a couple of these proposed drainage pipe upgrades. You mentioned that currently you have water lines bisecting the drainage pipe.
Correct.
Would, are you going to be able to eliminate that with the upgrades?
What we've included within these numbers actually bore in the water line, so we would drop the water line underneath, underneath the culverts. We tried to stay away from anything that had gravity sewer or force sewer that then would encompass additional issues. So these were mainly water line crossings.
Thank you.
Okay, in, a debt affordability analysis was completed by our consultants and presented in June 2024 and materials were also presented November 11, 2024 at the boardwork session. So on this slide, Devonport provided an overview of four scenarios. The analysis included in case one, no additional dedicated tax rate revenue. Case two, there's a one cent. Case three shows three cents and case four shows five cents with tax rates dedicated in fiscal year 2027. To the right there, the assumption, the financing assumptions were a term of 20 years, level principal, calculating 5.344% adhered to the LGC safe harbor interest rate guidelines in the first principal and interest payments due the following fiscal year. Based on that criteria, the analysis showed all four cases fit within the debt policies and affordability and meet the debt ratio compliance. In the top section, in every one of these cases, the debt is issued quickly. However, if we don't need it as much in the first year, then we don't necessarily lose it. It's available in subsequent years. This chart also takes into consideration our existing debt as it is coming off. Let's review the cases for debt capacity and the tax rate impact. So in case one, there's no additional tax rate dedicated and our debt capacity shows 7.7 million. We have a declining debt schedule, so this is the natural capacity. However, keep in mind that we have future borrowing needs for vehicles and equipment. In case two, a one-cent additional tax rate increases debt capacity by 5.6 million, which taking the 7.7 plus the 5.6, we're at 13.3 million. In case three, a three-cent additional tax rate increase increases debt capacity at 16.8 million, or by 16.8 million totaling 24.5 million. And then on case four, the five-cent additional tax rate increase increases debt capacity by 28 million totaling $35,750,000. As you can see, that two cents equals roughly 10 to 11 million dollars. The chart, this chart shows the dedicated tax rate needed to fund each project. Projects will each be voted on separately. If these were approved by the board to move forward, then each of these four projects will have a separate question on the ballot to vote on. Based on what was presented to you today, Parks and Recreation proposed a total of $8 million, which equates to approximately 1.6 cents. Public Safety proposed $8 million for the fire station, which equates to approximately 1.6 cents. The stormwater projects totaled $6 million, which equates to approximately 1.2 cents. And street projects totaled $10 million, which is approximately two cents. To fund all proposed projects as they are, you would need an additional 6.4 cents dedicated in tax rate. I just want to point out that this note here in red, "Per the LGC, a failed bond referendum may hinder future project funding with other financing options." And what that means to you is if we, let's say the voters didn't approve the, they opposed the fire station that didn't pass. So then we want to find other means of financing and then the LGC may not approve that if the voters had just recently voted it down. So you're risking that. Now, that doesn't stay true the whole time. If you're talking several years down the road and you're presenting that to them, they'll look at it differently. But we can't just turn right around and honestly say that they're going to approve that and go against the voters.
And with that being said, staff's recommendation is to remove the public safety from the bond and if the board wants to give direction at some point to proceed to purchase property and to build a fire station at the appropriate time, we do that through the normal process, project process. And so with the three projects where we're talking about, we're looking at about $24 million for a proposed bond referendum, which would end up being about five cents.
I just want to comment too on that. If you later want to propose to build the fire station, go out for other means of financing, we still have to take a look at the tax rate. So that doesn't change that for us. We have to be able to afford that debt so that we'll have a tax rate increase.
Also, when it comes to a fire station, when we talk about adding the number of staff to work in the fire station, we're looking at about 2.2 cents on the tax rate for that.
So what does this look like to you as a taxpayer? Along the top of this chart, you'll see the property values of 100,000, 200,000, 300,000, 400,000. The following line shows the annual property tax rate, the cost of the annual property tax based on our tax rate at 39 cents. So for $100,000, it's $390 annually. $780 for a $200,000 home, $1,170 for a $300,000 home, and $1,560 for a $400,000 home. That's for the city of New Bern, tax rate at 39 cents, which is what it currently is. The annual cost for additional tax rates in this next section showing the estimated cost of additional penny up to six cents for each property value. So for every $100,000 property value, a penny is an additional $10. For example, if you were to approve moving forward with a total of $30 million to fund these projects, we would need an additional six cent tax rate, which would cost an additional $60, along the bottom line there, $60 for a $100,000 home, $120 for a $200,000 home, $180 for a $300,000 home, and $240 for a $400,000 home. So in summary, we have discussed the debt capacity and affordability. We estimated the tax, additional dedicated tax levy for proposed projects and the impact of our, on our taxpayers. Do you have any further questions for me?
So the annual cost here that this bond would, if we go with all four projects, if I have a $200,000 home, I'm going to pay an additional $120, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, with that being said, how would this be affected, and I asked you this question before, how would this, the taxpayers be affected by the property values when we have them rebalanced and their property values go up? So the tax amount would go up, correct?
Right.
The additional tax amount for this bond would go up. It's not locked in. This is not a fixed rate?
We can adjust down, but we cannot go up.
Okay, you cannot go up, but you can go down?
Yes.
Four is, the four is when it comes, do you understand what I'm saying, Kim?
I think.
When we have rebalanced, when we have rebalanced, okay? And I think they're done every, I think it's every six years. So then I have a $200,000 house, my house may go up to 300,000, okay? So I'm going to have additional, my taxes are going to go up to 1170 and then I'm going to have an additional $180 to pay. So that's what I was looking at. This is not, once we go with this bond, it's not a fixed rate. We can't, nothing is going to change if the tax rates change.
If your value changes.
If the value changed.
Value of your home, but the tax, if we set a six cent tax rate, we're set at a six cent tax rate. Now, we can go down.
Okay.
So if we find, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So Kim, let me ask you this. So the amount of the bond is going to be the amount of the bond. Let's just say it's $30 million. We have to pay $30 million back. If the reevaluation goes up or down, we still owe $30 million. So the burden on the taxpayer is going to be $30 million spread out amongst all of our taxpayers regardless of what that rate is. I think you're just providing some examples of what that would look like.
For them personally.
Correct, okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just foster a quick question. Again, assuming we get, we get a bond ordinance on the ballot and the voters say yes to whatever they say yes to, that does not preclude a future board of all of them deciding not to move forward on specific projects that the voters have previously approved. Is that accurate?
So, so once this is noted on, once it goes to the LGC, those projects would take place based on that bond. What's tied to that bond, those projects would take place.
Okay, so if future boards then don't have the option to decide not to move forward with a particular project at any point in the future.
I believe that's accurate unless the bond has not been, we have not gone after that bond yet.
All right, so the bond is really a mandate as opposed to not being a mandate.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
And as Alvin Astor indicated, that their opposite then is say if the, an EDGU's a proposed fire station as the example, is that if it were included in the bond and the voters voted no for it, a future board could turn around and say yes. But then again, we get into the situation that local government might preclude us from doing that or preclude a future board from doing that, given the vote of the public on that.
For at least a time unless we have the amount in fund balance to actually just pay, pay in cash, pay it together with that, yes.
Or you simply finance another project that you were going to pay cash for and get around the LGC's approval. Any more questions? Anything from staff?
So we'd like to hear your thoughts.
So we'd like to hear your thoughts. Is this something you would support? What type of direction would you like to give staff on this? We've talked about the timeframe for doing this. Really, that main meeting is when things have to start. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on whether or not you'd like to proceed.
So Foster, wouldn't we be having public engagements with our citizens?
So that would be started in May, and that's an educational piece.
Okay.
And I think what you see, mostly when you see bond referendums, you see citizens champion certain things and they work to promote it. But the city can only do so much with the educational piece per state statute. And of course, we'll provide all information, all the facts about it, how it's going to affect your tax rate, things like that. But we can't go out and put signs and banners up saying, you know, "City of New Bern expects you to, wants you to vote for this." We can't do that.
So what do you mean by when you say public, community engagement? I mean outreach?
Yeah, yeah. I think what you see with a lot of bond referendums is folks that may have an interest in the fire station or an upgraded Martin Marietta Park, taking them amongst themselves to gather support for certain projects like that. You see groups, whether it be an outing club or a chain of commerce or something like that, that takes the vocal lead in things like that.
Like pickleball association.
Exactly.
So Foster, we have less than three months to get this together.
That's correct.
So now we need to decide pretty much the direction we're going to take now.
Yes, sir.
To make it happen.
Yes, sir.
And then shortly after that, I guess we would have a...
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
So if you tell us, proceed, we'll finalize these amounts, we'll get ready for, present public hearing, and then follow that schedule of what was established and then move forward.
I'm in favor of that because I feel that the public needs to have some skin in the game in order to update the facilities out through the infrastructure of the city. And with that being said, I'm ready to be a part of that. Because every 50 years or every 20 years, costs change, things change, and so why be the point of making a great decision? I think it's time to move forward. That's just my opinion.
We just can't forget the fact that we might, if we, the public votes to do this, we might be adding 5 cents on our tax rate. And that doesn't have anything to do with the upcoming budgets and the next year's budgets on how much, you know, Foster's been begging us or telling us that we need to increase our budget, you know, to make ends meet here. So, you know, theoretically, you could be looking at, if this goes through, you could be looking at 8, 9 cents, 10 cents rate increase on the taxes.
That is true.
Over time, you're correct. You could see that. Just like this past year, we asked for a penny increase.
You agree?
And we're going to be talking about budget, in the budget season now, and I'll talk a little bit more about that this evening. But we're not anticipating asking for an increase at this time.
Oh, really?
That's our goal. That's correct.
Well, I, you know, I, with these four projects, I see a need, a dire need for two of them. That's just the way I feel about it. And I just, I just look at it from a citizen's point with this bond referendum. Right now, I just don't feel like this is the best time for this board to impose additional tax rate on our citizens. I mean, I've gone out over the city and I've looked at communities within my ward and other areas of the city, and I tell you, we have citizens that are still suffering from Hurricane Florence. I mean, there are citizens that can't even do a lot of major repairs to their houses. And I know who all have been listening to the news and you hear about rebuild North Carolina, and a lot of citizens was depending on rebuild North Carolina. And then, you know, we got all the rates that we've just imposed on our citizens or elected, and it's, this is just, to me, this is a bad time. And you all, we all are aware, and we've been listening to the news and all the things that's going on up at the Capitol, all of these, with all the tariffs and the food prices soaring and, you know, these tariffs is going to have an impact on the whole economy. And I just feel that this is not a time right now to impose a $32 million or $24 million on our taxpayer and citizens, even though I know the taxpayer and citizen will be the one, when they go out and cast their ballot to vote on if they want these projects. But from my point of view, you know, I'm looking at it from a perspective of the way the economy is. And, and who knows? All of us here, you know, election is coming upon us, and all of us on this board may be replaced. And I just, as a, Alderman sitting in this seat right now, and I've listened to my constituents and I've heard them, and I have gone out, I've seen, seen how they're living, some of them just barely making just the basic needs to get by. I just, I don't feel good with voting on this, on this bond referendum. We as a board, I mean, I just think we need to take the time to look into this more because this is a lot of money. This is a lot of debt that our taxpayers are going to be paying.
Foster, I mean, in terms of direction, I have no problem with the recommendation of staff to separate out the fire station from this bond ordinance. Again, it's kind of the same argument that I made a few meetings ago, that the proposed fire station is something that has been discussed by previous boards for probably the last decade. And in my mind, it falls more into the need category as opposed to want or desire. And that's not to say that stormwater improvements, you know, are not any more important or less So I'm comfortable with separating the fire station out and then just to continue looking at these other projects to determine whether or not some or all of them, you know, can potentially move forward. And the other side of it is, with a referendum, we're asking the voters of New Bern to tell us that either yes, they are in favor of paying more taxes to see these improvements accomplished, or that they're not. And you can't get really a more democratic way of having a decision made by, by asking the voters what they want and what they're willing to tolerate. So I know the numbers are high. New Bern is not really accustomed to dealing with those kind of numbers, when you're dealing with debt service. However, these improvements are going to be here for decades to come. And if we don't address some or all of them now, the costs are going to get higher and higher every year. And at some point, the system falls apart unless it's addressed. So as tough as it is, again, I'm generally comfortable moving forward, asking the voters how they feel about these things.
Alderman Astor and Royal?
I favor what Alderman Prill said, as well as Alderman Best. Almost caught between the two. I know that we have discussed family-friendly entertainment for the longest, and I remember Alderman Astor talking about nothing to do and nowhere to go and nothing for our children. And that is certainly a vital need of our city. We've talked about it and talked about it. I feel that in the midst of all of this, again, the voters, if this passes tonight, will be the one to make that decision as to whether they want their taxes increased. But me personally, looking at what our citizens are facing, the challenging, the challenges, the stressful times that we're living in, it is economically very challenging for most people. And because of that, I would not favor all of the projects. But again, I guess my question is, how do you extract the fire department? That definitely is a need. That will take place sooner or later. And again, we talked about the increase in prices of everything. So what would that look like to just extract that? And that would not be a part of the referendum? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. It would look like, a great example, Stanley White Recreation Center project, when we had to go out for a loan to cover the balance of what FEMA and the state insurance would not cover. So we would create a project fund for that and go from there.
Okay. Well, that would be what I would vote towards to, again, I would not like to see our citizens taxed, but I know the fire station is an absolute need. I know the growth there in West New Bern is increasing at a high rate. And I know eventually, and I believe Alderman Prill said, kicking the can down the road, to use his expression, soon or late, we're going to have to address it. The family-friendly entertainment, all of those things. Again, I would just simply prefer not to support the bond referendum, but certainly extracting the fire department and moving forward with that.
Alderman Astor?
Yeah, well, I agree that the fire station needs to come out. We need to go ahead and move on that. And the rest of it, I would like to kind of take some time to go through it. I'm, I'm pretty much in favor of most of it. I see, I would like to see it trimmed down a little bit so it wouldn't be such a burden on our taxpayers. But overall, I'm pretty much in favor of, you know, what we have, was proposed. I think there's some, some things that we can trim among the categories, but...
I am as well. Need any additional direction?
I think I've got the direction. So what we may end up doing is having some small group meetings with, with the board to talk about specific projects and get your feedback from that as we move toward, toward the May timeline. Okay? I think I've got what we need.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.